Stand together for our pledge. Attention, salute. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for open comment prior to our action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that the comments are limited to three minutes in order to fight equity while speakers, to ensure our meeting is reasonable length. If you have more information that could be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask clarification from a school board member or administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So.
We have a motion at the bottom. Is there a second? Second one, Ms. McCool. Any comments? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? Do we have Ms. Campbell here? Don't see her. She might have.
She might.
She might pee with the game. Donations?
We have a sheet for that.
I think we have a sheet. There were two donations. Here, let me read them. I'll take care of it, Madam Clerk. We have $300 donation and a $75 donation, both from the barn at Newby's Crossroads. One to the class of 2027 and one to 2029. I guess this doesn't, it's not good to be a part of class 28, right? I don't know.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Next month.
Next month. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our October meeting? We have motion, Ms. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. McCool. Any comment? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? So, Ms. Grove, have you had opportunity to review those?
I have, and we're way at 40%. We're about where we're supposed to be.
Great. Is there a motion approved of the consent agenda? We have motion. Ms. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bondham. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so, Dr. Grinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item on superintendent reports is a report from Mrs. Kathy Zare Rhodes. She is going to update the board on the October bullying prevention month activities that she is so gracious to coordinate and lead for us at the district. We're so fortunate.
All right, thank you again for this opportunity to kind of give a show and tell of what we've been doing. So, one of the, um, let's see. You can start.
You know what? I need to move so everybody can see. I thought that was.
Next slide, please. Or you can go back one.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Actually, because it's a P. I'm gonna blink.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
Sorry.
It's fine. So, I was just sharing the first one, that we do have warning announcements for both schools that emphasize themes of how to be a supportive friend in social isolation, which is kind of what I've been concerned about or wanting to emphasize this time, that to gather this and being a good friend and developing relationships. So, we've had the sandwich swap over the announcements at the elementary school. And I also provide resources and links to videos and books to the teachers at both schools. Next one. We celebrated Unity Day on October 16th. And students and staff were encouraged to wear orange to show support for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And you can see, one of our teachers had a special shirt made, that's the picture in the middle. It says, "Courage, unity, peace, inclusion, choose kindness, and then bully." Next, Spirit Week was celebrated October 28 through November 1st.
This is blank. I'm sorry, Kathy. Let me see if it's just the way it.
Came up okay on my.
Pretty much, but.
There it goes. Okay, for some reason.
That looks familiar.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. And this time, we asked some of our middle school students to choose the daily themes, which were pajama day, put bullying to sleep, amazing rainbow day, wear different colors, difference is gonna be beautiful, twin day, be a friend, character counts that was Halloween, dress as a favorite book character, and I think my new favorite, flannel Friday, wear flannel, give a warm hug. And then, once again, we celebrated Start With Hello Week. This was October 21 through 25th. And the focus is on creating a culture of inclusion and connectedness. You can sense a theme here. It's kind of throughout our activities. We encourage students to reach out to and include those who may be feeling isolated. So, some of those activities were hello name badges. And the students wore these as a way of greeting others on Monday. On Tuesday, they learned how to say hello in many languages. On Thursday, one of the favorite activities is when the high school curators come down and have lunch with our elementary school students. And those kids just adore having that attention from the older students. And then, we also, on Friday, we wore colored wristbands. And then, if we see someone else in the building with a matching color, then you greet that person, whether it's adults or students. And then, something else, I think was somewhat new this year. I started it last year, but we did a little, we kind of expanded this this year. They're called Upstand or Badges. And we recognize the students who show these qualities. Make others feel seen, reach out and help others, and help create a community where everyone feels a sense of belonging. And so, you can see a poster on the right that was made by some of the students at the elementary school. And we posted those and gave those little badges to each of the students that were recognized. And then, this is the show and tell part. It's been a little time, though. We asked the students to complete gratitude letters again. And I've put a few up there, so I'm gonna read that first one. If you look closely, you can see some drawings in the middle of the page. It says, "Mrs. Grady, who is an art teacher at the elementary school, I am grateful for art class, and you, you helped me every single time I needed. And if it weren't for you, I'd still be drawing people like this." But now, I draw them like this. Thank you for helping me get better at art. And the one on the right is from a first grader to the PE teacher, Mrs. Pitts. And he says, "I'm grateful for Miss Pitts because I like it, because I always have a lot of fun and get tired." And there's a picture of Miss Pitts saying, "Go, go, go." Let's see, I've got a few others. I'm gonna just think that has lives. One of these, let's see. This one is written to a seventh grade teacher, Mrs. Jarrett. "I am grateful for how you are one of the most wonderful teachers and a grateful mother. You know when to be funny and when to be serious. That makes you a great person and a teacher because you teach your students with passion." This is from a fifth grader to Mrs. Math. "I am grateful for you always slowing down when I didn't understand a lesson. I never really liked math, was very good at it, but I understand it more now, even though I still don't really like it." And actually, this is my favorite. It's a short squeeze, written to a second grade teacher, Ms. Snyder. "I am grateful for you teaching me the math I love. I'm sorry for being a troublemaker. I'm responsible now." Mr. Ray, Mr. Ray Atkins, our custodian at the elementary school, actually, in high school as well. "I'm grateful for Mr. Ray because Mr. Ray is always on the run and always helping people and always fixing stuff." And I think you need a note. Thank you for everything. Mr. Glassford is one of our special education teachers at the elementary school. "I'm grateful for you, I'm grateful for your help," let me see, she missed a word there, but. "I'm grateful that you help me in class, make class fun, and for giving me the supplies for school. Thank you for giving, giving me a snack when I was hungry." And I'll read one more. This is to Mrs. Low Barton, one of our administrators at the elementary school. "I am grateful for Mrs. Low Barton because she keeps us safe, and she's really nice to everybody. She also tells us things on the announcements. I look up to her." So, that was just a sampling. I had quite a stack. And it was really a lot of fun to give them, hand them out to all the teachers and staff members. And they, they were very wide in terms of their coverage of people because just about every role in the school was represented that received one, so that was wonderful. Okay, so the other show and tell part is our poster contest. So, you can see, those are some of the copy, or pictures of some of the posters that were displayed. So, the theme this year was showing ways of making new friends and including others. So, the first one on the, the one on the left states, "You are a missing piece to our friendship." And the one on the right is an undersea picture with animals and so forth. It says, "Don't be afraid to come out of your shell at RCES." Next one, you can see on the left is a kind of a Halloween theme, "Be a buddy, not a bully." And then, on the right, "Be kind to others." And then, I have two more. I like these because of these are kind of real like, it's our playground. And so, on the left, it's a little difficult to see, but there's a lot of detail of children playing on the playground. And it says, "Let's play together." And on the right, "Friends are better together." So, I want to give a thank you to Amy Grady, our art teacher, for supplying materials and encouraging students to participate. And we had 28 posters created, so. And then, I'll turn to the high school, the pride clubs. And I've talked about this each year. This is a valuable program for our students. And just to remind you, a pride stands for positive relationships, inspire, a drive for excellence. And the goal is to, that every student at RCS belongs to a positive peer group. And they also develop relationships with adults, with, and a lot of times, adults leave the clubs of their own interests, so. So, if you go to the next one, these are the brand-new clubs for this year. We do, it does continue throughout the year, and they meet on a monthly basis. So, I'll just name a few that, up there, boards with the fours, I believe, are board games. And as you are probably aware, Leo Club usually involves community service projects. There's a chorus group, some fitness activities, Explorers Club, quite a variety. So, Danny Pand, the school counselor, is the one who creates and manages this program. And she does it very well every year. So, that is what I have to share. Do you have any questions?
It's intentional. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right. The next item on 4.2 is a superintendent designee form. We are undergoing an audit in our Director of Special Education office in different areas. And this piece of paper came up that even though it is in our minutes that we officially designate Dr. Johnson as our superintendent designee, there is a special form they want to have on file. So, it does not require action at this meeting. That was something we did clarify between the time we posted the agenda in this meeting. But it does require a signature and for us to upload it to DOE. And then, in January, we will do it again, and this time have this form to put it in January.
So, the action item in 8.1 is not required?
We will not have to take action, correct?
Just a point of clarification. Shouldn't it say, "Dr. Carol E. Johnson," so this is?
It should, yes, on the form. Okay, we'll take care of that, too. But yes, it should, yeah.
You work hard for that.
You do, yes. We'll make sure it says it. It came from her, so.
You work hard for the mission, too.
She's so humble, I'll tell you.
She is so humble.
She said on her anniversary. This is worse.
But we will take care of that and upload it so DOE is happy. And in January, we'll do that again. But no action tonight, because you did take action to designate her as the designee in January at your regular reorganization meeting of the board. So, yes, let the minutes reflect that we talked about it, and it's okay. All right. 4.3 is the Commit to Be Fit annual update. So, we do have the annual report here. And Holly is here, so she can give an overview, if she's so willing.
Absolutely. It is my pleasure.
Year seven, can you believe that?
Yeah.
Yeah, year seven. And I don't believe that's how I'm gonna pilot your either.
It's not.
Yes, so, members of the school board, I am very excited to stand before you to give you an overview of our end-of-year report for Commit to Be Fit from last school year. And I just want to start off by pointing out that beautiful smile there on the cover of the booklet. She was trying chia seed pudding, and it was quite delicious. And here are a few more photos from our cafeteria. As you know, we focus on three different prongs: cafeteria, classroom, and community. And we'll start with our cafeteria here. If you'd like to scroll down. So, RCPS was a recipient of the USDA's Food and Nutrition Services Healthy Meals Incentive Grant, which is very exciting. On October 13th of last year, we had USDA's Administrator Cindy Long visit RCES, as well as some other very special guests. And they toured the courtyard. And Cindy Long went to the cafeteria and served the scratch-based pizza that was made in the cafeteria to the kids. And it was, it was an absolutely wonderful visit. With that grant, we were able to get some new equipment in the cafeterias. And also, Chef Brian Baumrich, who has worked in both cafeterias, he alongside our amazing cafeteria staffs, as well as Jackie Teeger, have really put together some amazing nutritious and tasty meals. If you scroll down just a touch, you'll get a little sampling there of some of the delicious meals that were served in both school cafeterias last year. So, they were quite a hit. In fact, that scratch-based pizza was among the students' choice. They voted to have that appear on the menu regularly. And we also did the Harvest of the Month taste testing, both at the elementary school and high school, where we had Mallory Grady come in and share nutrition education with the students. And they got to try the different featured vegetables or fruits in different menu items. And the kids always loved that. And they often get stickers as well. At the elementary school, that's a huge hit. And then, the Battle of the Blenders, this was a fun little challenge that Commit to Be Fit put together for March Madness. We originally wanted to do a whole bracket, like the basketball bracket, but when we really started to figure out how many ingredients we would need for all those recipes, we landed on four. But the way it broke down is, we had two different types of smoothies that the kids got to taste each time, and then they voted for their favorites. And that, the favorite then moved on. And we did that again for another pair. That one moved on. At the very end, we had our show-off. It happened to fall during the PTO's fun run, where there's already a lot of excitement, and the mascot was there. And we had blender bikes, where the kids could actually make the smoothies themselves. And, yes, and then vote for their favorites. And their favorite one was to appear in the cafeteria. After tallying all the votes that won, the busy bluebird won by, I believe it was five or six votes. So, we ended up having both of them one, available in the cafeteria for the students. Also, in the cafeteria, Panther Palette, Chef Baumrich works with Farm to Table at the elementary school. And they use some of the herbs that they grew to create their own recipe and serve it to the younger students. Also, the staff farmer's market has continued, which is a huge hit, as well as pop bucks market bags, free market bags with tokens for students to shop at the local farmer's market, available for all the students at RCPS. Healthy snacks at Halloween. And then, also, we did some fun nutrition trivia throughout the school year. So, that was cafeteria. Moving on to our classroom prong. With classrooms, so our BrainStar Action-Based Learning Lab, we've had that for many years. Research really supports that movement really prepares the brain for learning. Additionally, they get extra physical activity. The children love it. But this past school year, we really did a movement-based literacy focus. We collaborated with the reading specialist, Miss Catherine Todd, designed a lot of different literacy activities while the kids are still moving, to really help promote literacy growth, as well as cement reading concepts that they've learned in the classroom. And the kids had a blast. And Jeremy and Kayla have done an amazing job in that lab. Student-led mindfulness. We usually, at the end of lab, have cooled the students down, get them prepared to go back to class after having so much fun. But we decided to really focus on mindfulness and deep breathing. And this last year, we started having students take turns leading a mindful moment with the breath ball. And it was amazing to see the students just loved leading that, and the other students really respected that role. So, that was a wonderful way to really promote mindfulness and give the students an active role. And of course, the Strength, Fitness, and Personal Health elective at the high school continued to be a success. Love that picture there. That was one of the classes. They went on a field trip to Mary's Rock and had a wonderful time. Also, last year, the neuroleasium was used. That is our alternative seating classroom at high school. And we did classroom push-ins. And of course, the sensory pathway at the elementary school is greatly enjoyed by the younger students. And we also opened up the lab when it wasn't in use to provide a reset room for staff, as well as staff that wanted to bring in some students, just to sit on beanbags and enjoy the beautiful fish and turtles swimming on the wall. All right, so, moving along to our final prong, community. With this one, I have to give props to Dr. Grinsley. Commit to Be Fit hosted this, but it was all Dr. Grinsley's idea to promote a physical activity challenge for our staff, in which the goal was to try to get 250 minutes per week of physical activity. But ultimately, our goal was to beat Dr. Grinsley's minutes. So, each week, all the staff, they recorded their minutes of physical activity, reported it back. We had a weekly leaderboard. At the end of the 12 weeks, we had some fantastic prizes. It was so overseeing that we actually kicked off an eight-week challenge shortly after that to continue the fun, had some phenomenal prizes with that one as well. And at the end of the year, those that completed the 12-week or the eight-week were recognized at the end-of-year awards. So, thank you, Dr. Grinsley, for inspiring us. Also, there are staff wellness rooms at both schools. At the elementary school, as well as the high school, was equipped with a nice facility with cardio equipment, as well as weights for staff to be able to use. Community challenges. Our transformation challenge, we had over 100 participants from the community. That one was, I forget if it was eight weeks or 12 weeks. We've done a few of them now. But with this one, they received daily workouts for each week with video tutorials and pictures and a program booklet and a whole nine yards. And that's a lot of fun. We also did a Just Chill Challenge, where we invited the staff and community to literally take some time to de-stress by doing enjoyable activities, and which is an important component of wellness. Our hike, Rappahannock, was a huge community challenge, again, as well as the virtual turkey trout last year. And then, we did an activity challenge for the community, where we challenged them to achieve 150 minutes of physical activity each week. And then, this year just shows that with the community prong, the various activities that we had running throughout the school year, we were quite busy. Some of the highlights, though, I've already mentioned, also Headwaters After School Program. We had an opportunity to collaborate with Headwaters and offer line dancing for the students in collaboration with Karen's Line Dancing, which was fun. We also did, hosted a few senior workshops, as well as all those fun activities that I've already mentioned. So, it was a busy year. And yeah, just a few more pictures with autism awareness walk, line dancing, meal prep, expo, family engagement. It was, it was a wonderful year. And I really want to give a shout-out to the PAC Foundation, who funds Commit to Be Fit. And over the past several years, Commit to Be Fit has really been able to make a difference for students, health, as well as staff and community. And we wouldn't be able to do that without their support. So, thank you, PAC, and all of you as well. We do appreciate your, your support in this very important initiative. Any questions?
It's a great program. It's a culture changer. I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.4. Dr. Johnson has submitted an updated list of names for the Special Education Advisory. And anytime that happens, it does need official board approval to appoint them. So, those names are here for you. And that will be an action item later on the agenda. All right, and item 4.5, SIFT update. So, SIFT has been very busy, working with Elizabeth Parker, our lobbyist, on quite a few behind-the-scenes techniques and tactics, I would say, without saying too much. We don't want to give away our whole hand. But there has, has been a lot of facilitation of conversations with key members, member-to-member lobbying. The group has been able to put together some communications. And one of those that I have here for you is our new infographic, thanks to Holly.
It's really good, really clear.
I'm sorry, I had it right here. There we go. So, we had an initial draft that we shared at an earlier meeting, but after we hired the lobbyist and started talking about key players, she gave us some wonderful feedback about, you know, how we may want to tackle this. And then, when we had the Going Back to Undo Recession Era caps as a focus that came out of the subcommittee, that was like, ooh, a whole new strategy. So, we went back to the drawing board, basically, to redo our language and our communication about this issue. So, that's what this infographic is about. And this is what we have been sharing with those who listen. And we have some more key conversations happening even later this week. At the, and thank you for all the public comment that came out for the last subcommittee meeting. There was so much that it took up over half of the public comment in the whole, on the whole agenda. So, it made them say, wow, Rappahannock.
They actually, they actually read the?
They did.
They have to read it aloud, right?
Well, they didn't read all the comments, but they made note that over half the public comment given to this committee was about Rappahannock.
Oh, good, good.
So, that was awesome. So, it got on their radar. And Delegate Rasul was one of the people who actually said, well, this requires a deeper study. And he advised the subcommittee staff to look greater into the issue, because clearly we're not grasping everything, because this does seem like a one-off and on paper, how we look. And that's been our challenge, because on paper, to Richmond, we look like we shouldn't even be having an issue. So, that's something that we need to clarify with them. So, Mr. Curry and I have been working with the lobbyist a whole lot on combining the county message with the school message together, on how we speak to the staffer who's studying this. And we have a meeting with him next, later this week. So, we're going to, the person who's going to be giving the analysis to the delegates.
Will you go to Richmond for that meeting, or is it?
It's gonna be a virtual meeting. So, that's where we are right now. The subcommittee will meet again December 9th. I do plan on attending as Mr. Mills and Gary Curry, and hopefully Chair Donahue will make it with us as well, and any members of the SIFT team who want to come. So, we can be there to answer any questions and be able to, you know, stand our ground on this issue.
It's on Monday.
It is. So, yeah, we'll see with the staff member who's going to be analyzing our situation and giving some recommendations to the committee. I really want to understand his thinking behind it as well, and see what questions they have. Because when they're not talking about. Because when they're not talking about the LCI and that part of the formula, then they're talking about revenue capacity building and revenue capacity formula that they have. And it also does not help us very much. And Gary Curry has an excellent explanation on how that doesn't work well for us in Rappahannock. So hopefully, we can convince them. To those that we have been talking to, though, it is eye-opening for them, and they do seem to have a bit more empathy for us. As that plays out in session, we never really know, but at this point in time, it seems to be getting quite a bit of attention, so.
It looks like a no-brainer, doesn't it?
You would think.
So did Elizabeth, did she take a chomp at this latest infographic?
Yes, that's why it's in the...
That's why it looks like it.
Yes, yeah. So yeah, and then we're also in the process of working with Headwaters and the SIFT team. We have a little subcommittee that's a fundraising team. So we're trying to come up with the other $30,000 to, should this go well, and it looks like it's, you know, moving in a positive direction, to continue with our lobbyists through the actual session. So we have her through December, and if we decide to start really hitting hard lobbying in January, should this issue look like it's going to stay alive, then we'll need that $30,000 to procure them. We are working on that effort as well.
It's a good team.
It's a great team. It's a persistent team. You don't give up. So that's what we're...
It's a good strategy, and it's something that we had to do if we ever expect to see it, so.
Yeah. Any questions?
That's good, that's good. Thanks for leading that, Shannon.
Absolutely. I think that concludes my presentation.
Right. Thank you. Moving on to our reports. Headwaters, representative?
Yeah, I get the chance to meet with Ms. Schoutler. And here is a brief report. There is a new performing arts immersion program that is K-12, or a program in K-12, but throughout the system this year that's funded by a anonymous donor. Art students were surveyed with a list of performances to choose from, some in Charlottesville, some in DC, all over. And they will be, Ms. Falk is administering it, so they're all within. There's some ballet, there's some symphony orchestra, there's opera. It's a very high, fine art kind of list of things for interested art students.
It's unique. Primarily field trips to Kennedy Center.
Yeah, and they're actually, the ones that I noticed were not during school hours, so it's like a special trip that would be taken, and it's no cost to the families who attend. So this really opens doors to people.
Will it provide transportation?
Yeah, transportation, and like, it's going to be transportation.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's great. It's a fun list, and it's really open to, so anybody who knows students who haven't received the list, they can receive the list too. Like, we're trying to be as open. You don't need to be identified gifted, you just need to have an interest in performing arts, and it's so exciting. And then the after-school program is humming along, and there will be an end-of-term student showcase in December, actually, after our next school board meeting. But it's on December 12th from 4:00 to 5:30, and it will include student performances as well as a showcase of the activities they've done. So those are always really fun, and I think they usually have snacks, too. And then, just as Dr. Grimsley mentioned, Headwaters is partnering with the SIFT team to try to strategize a little bit, $30,000 to retain our lobbyist, who is looking for this Dr. Grimsley outline. And that's it.
That's great. Mr. Groob at MDGS?
We haven't met. We'll meet December 12.
All right. Thank you very much. Informational items, we have a copy of the budget calendar because the budget cycle never ends.
Oh, it never ends.
And this is something I think that we'll actually be, you know, we do have to vote to approve this particular budget calendar, which is just the top items, I would assume. Right? And it has a joint meeting on it, February the 11th, with the board supervisors, again.
What, the elementary school?
The elementary. And all the various hearings that are required, of course, too. Any questions about that? Comments? You already put it in your calendar before you got here.
I did.
What if they didn't vote yes?
I'll be there anyway.
The VSBA Capitol Conference notification. I think Ms. Bynum's the only one that's actually ever gone to that.
Yeah, I would be glad to go another time.
It's in January.
Yeah, it would probably dovetail with...
It probably would, yeah.
Yeah, I would be happy to attend.
So it's in Jan, the end of January?
Yes.
Yeah, who knows? By then, we may want to send a couple.
It might be.
Maybe both are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to look at that more. Between now and then, we have a schoolwork conference in Weenford.
And there is a virtual option, too.
21, I think.
21, start, 22.
Thursday. All right, so moving on to public comments. Is there anybody that would like to address the board this evening? Yes, can?
Betsy Beadle from Wakefield. I just, and I don't want to jump the gun on anything, but since this is almost the end of the year, and as Dr. Grimsley very deftly mentioned, how there is a group working on the SIFT fundraising effort to continue to keep Elizabeth on as our working at the lobbying. I would like to throw out the idea, and I don't know if this is something for board approval, but because this is November and we've got less than two months to raise $30,000, and I don't want to give away the strategy, but one of the ways of raising money is obviously to reach out to large donors and get them to put up a large share of that $30,000. But it would be, I think, inspirational and also important for the community to share some responsibility for making this happen. And one of the thoughts that has been sort of thrown around is the idea of that famous thermometer and putting that in front of the school and doing some PR around the idea that this is of interest to everybody, whether you're a parent of a child, a grandparent of a child, or someone who is a large property owner and has no grandchildren or children in this district. So I would like to throw that out for some kind of either discussion in your, after the meeting, or, but I think time is of the essence. And $30,000 isn't a lot of money, but it's also that time of the year when people are getting a lot of other appeals. And I think that we can do this, but we need to do it in a way that involves the whole community, not just a handful of, hopefully, philanthropic people. So I put that on the table. I think that the kind of leverage that this potentially provides is huge. For $30,000 or $50,000 to be able to potentially leverage more than a million dollars for this district is an opportunity that we shouldn't just kind of say we're going to do and then not have a plan for. So I would like to lay that out for the group and hopefully have a little more discussion either now or very soon thereafter. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Is there anybody else this evening? Yes, can?
I'm Steph Litter, Wakefield District. And I'm actually going to give away the strategy here. So as you may know, a number of people get the benefit of the agricultural tax rate. And so we're, and that could be in jeopardy if we can't get money to support the schools. So we were thinking of using that as leverage to ask some of the major landowners who benefit from that tax exemption to maybe give a few thousand dollars to this effort. So if you guys know of anybody that you think might be persuaded by this argument or be happy to give some money to Headwaters, for which they also get a tax benefit, please let us know. Thank you.
That's out of the bag. All right. Is there anyone else? Thank you. I think probably we should undertake our action items, and perhaps under new business, we could discuss this public thermometer idea. It's a good idea. All right, no need to vote on 8.1. Is there a motion to approve the budget calendar as it was presented this evening?
So moved.
Motion, Ms. Groob, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. McCool, any discussion? Buckle up, voter count. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
I agree with this board.
And the committee, SEAC member, committee member list, is there a motion to approve it as was presented this evening?
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. McCool, any discussion? Thanks to those that stood up to be on that committee.
It's a lot of repeat.
It's very important. It is a lot of repeat. It's very committed to it. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered. New business. So is there any issue that you can think of with having a public display of a thermometer that would be a fundraising type of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a good idea. We've talked about this, too. And we have another infographic, thanks to Holly. If you're interested in giving some more information to people who may be interested in helping, we do have that. So I'll make sure you all get a copy of that, too, as you're having your discussions. And we thought about launching a social media campaign with a thermometer, like, to show where we are.
That's a great idea.
With the link, because Headwaters has created a specific link right on their page to donate for that every... So if we do it that way, it'll have some broad reach, and we could send it out in our newsletters and...
We could share it on our network. I think it'd have to be explained extremely well.
It does, and the infographic does that. So I will send that to you guys. We had a few final touches in our subcommittee we were talking about, but really, it was that idea from the beginning. You remember at those initial SIFT meetings in June we were having about raising money, how great it would be to have this sort of grassroots GoFundMe kind of campaign to help with the effort, and so everyone can help with that, too. So it's both. It's leveraging, yes, the landowners who do have this wonderful benefit here, you know, that could be in jeopardy if we don't find a way to leverage more revenue. And then combining that with the effort here. So I think that would be great. So Holly and I have been working on that.
The importance, the importance of, we've invested so much already. And oh, by the way, if we, as much as we've done so far, if we're not successful with lobbyist who knows what she's doing and the materials we've created so far and all the data that backs it, if we can't be successful this go-around, I'm not sure what it takes to be successful. And so we'd better, you know, full throttle, push right now, or we, I'm not sure why we would keep trying. We're just beating our head against the wall. I was wondering, maybe we could use some of that anti-bullying material, because I feel like we've been bullied from the state. So anyway, it's now, to me, it's an hour-never kind of thing. We got to push. So let's do something public and out there. I don't know if we, I don't know if the thermometer on the roadside's going to gain as much ground as the, like, the social media, really. But there are people that might contribute that don't have anything to do with social media.
I think that that's, that is, I can think of some individuals who I think would respond more to a personal appeal than social media.
And that is also the strength.
And you're probably not one of you.
We probably need both.
Have their names, like...
We probably need both.
Like, advertised.
Yeah.
So yes, if you know somebody that you'd like to talk to, and like I said, I will finalize with the team tomorrow, any other updates that we want to make, and then we can send out the infographic, because if people are asking for those talking points, and it explains it really well, what we need to raise, and it puts it in a really neat fundraising pyramid that, you know, says if everybody gave about $4, we'd be there, you know?
But if we're going to put something out on the highway, if that was our intent...
I think we need to throw something in the paper, too, big time.
That'd be great.
Something in the paper.
I mean, the paper's been so good to us, they may continue to be.
Yeah. Yeah, not bad kind of thing. With a little QR link.
So I'm not sure how to get the thermometer on the road as a, you know, a tool, but somehow or another, that needs to be built and look, you know, look decent.
We have a great, a great chat.
Yeah, we do, we do. I just don't know how free I am to task them.
Yeah.
They probably could put something together that would be presentable.
Or chocking.
Yeah, maybe. Okay.
Anyway, I don't know if we can mention, see what they think, but it's got to turn around pretty quick.
Stand that old muscle on there.
Can't, can't be a three-week project. It has to be turned around pretty quick.
That's the thing. You have the three weeks to raise the money. So it's going to be social will be the quickest way to get it out, and it'll be in, you know, alive. If we put it out on the roadway, it's just going to be, how do we communicate people driving by, what that is?
And they don't even know.
And they don't know. So that's tough to grab. For us, it wouldn't, we would know and get some, you know, energy around it in the school. But as far as reaching out, I think the infographic will help a lot. And then if we keep sending it out and updating and keeping it up to date on the website and through social and...
We're almost there.
Yeah, we're so close. But then the personal touch is the other key. It's going to take face-to-face meetings with it. But yeah, it would be great to get everybody involved and see where we're at periodically.
The question is, if you're not on social media or on the internet, how are you going to be a contributor?
Well, that's where the...
Newspaper.
The newspapers.
So the newspaper angle's going to have to take care of that.
You know, and I've been in contact with Ireland about doing it.
Okay, good. All right, good strategy. Running out of time. Thanks for mentioning that, Betsy.
Thank you so much.
All right, is there any other new business this evening? Future agenda items. Is there any future agenda items you want?
I'd be interested to have a report on profile of a graduate and what is happening in the office. You know, we have someone from Headwaters in the office as well, and just how we're able to extend those efforts and really reach students with a variety of different goals. Or even if people who don't know what their goals are. But that's important to do some of this.
You know, I was, so obviously, the elementary school roof is a project that's out there on the horizon. And 20-some years ago, you know, we put that shingle roof on there. And I know we're getting estimates to put shingles on the roof again.
And a metal one, too.
And we're going to get a metal quote.
Yeah.
Good, good. Because I hate the idea of kicking the can down the road when I see the roof that's on this high school, and it's going to last a long time, right? So it could be a kick in the gut, but I think we better take a look at it and make sure we're doing our best.
Yes, for sure. It's going to be a big part of our discussions through budget time. The capital needs, the roof is definitely a big one. Vehicles, we need buses.
Right, and the activity buses, we need more of those.
Yeah, well, and just student transport vans. We just lost another one, and we have outplaced students that we need for services and have to bring kids places. And when we, we're down one, and we need three or four more. It would be great to keep up with that need, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And the cost to fix... And the cost to fix it will be too much. So that's something to, we will be talking about. And then also, next month, for a future agenda item, we will need to discuss cellphone policy. So VSB A did release a statement that they are not going to come out with a policy for districts, which is interesting, because for every other executive order, they always have. So it's surprising. But, so they're not going to come out with a...
Suggested policy.
No, no recommendations. So we're kind of on our own on that, so.
And that's okay.
Yeah. But that's something you should discuss, and we can see if there's anything that you want to update or, you know. But it should be discussed. And I will have the principals come and update you on how what we've been doing has worked, any suggestions. And if the board does have the authority to enact a policy that is consistent with the executive order, we argue that it pretty well is consistent with what the essence of the executive order is, and that local school boards do have the authority to enact those policies and regulations as it's fit in their district. But we can bring in more recommendations at that point. We all can decide to do anything or leave our, you know, the SIF policy and computer use, device use, the way it is. That'd be up for discussion.
All right. And that's next month where we talk about that?
Next month. Yes, because by January, we have to be done.
Have to have something.
All right.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to thank the schools for Monday's program. It was exceptional. Very good. I didn't realize that Dr. Boynton was versing to one.
I know, she was everywhere.
Singing.
Outstanding job. It's awesome.
And I mentioned this earlier, but your ward is going to be in Clerk. I guess Clerk Conference is the same time again. And so we'll all be in Williamsburg on the 20th and the 21st, and some of us on the 22nd of November before we get back. I think all four of us are going to be there, aren't we?
Yep.
What are you guys going to do?
We're going to go, go up on the, for the opening on Wednesday.
You're going to go Wednesday?
I'm going to go Wednesday.
Okay, I'm just coming Thursday.
Thursday?
Oh, okay. We'll have to talk. You told me Thursday.
What are you, what are you going to do?
Going up for the, the opening is Wednesday, right?
Yes. Well, Thursday's the big general session.
Thursday the general.
Yeah. Wednesday's the first day that you can get there.
Okay. We have to, we have to look at that.
Yep.
All right, well, I guess you guys will be talking.
Yep, let us know.
I'm going to be driving from there.
We'll be there, but I just have it in my calendar, and I, okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I'll be driving down alone, but if you need a ride home, I'll have room. If anybody needs a ride home for any reason. All right. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is in here on December the 10th at 6:30. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
You need to read that one.
I do.
It's wordy.
Discuss and consider appointment of staff for classified and coaching positions, request for sick leave bank resignation of classified position, and discussion of superintendent's goals pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-371181.
Mr. Groob, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? That's ordered, and we're going to be in the room next door for 20 minutes. If you want to hang out, feel free.